All right, it's five o'clock. Do we have a chaplain in the room? Okay, no chaplain, but I think we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance anyway.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the March seventeenth meeting of the Burley County Commission to order. First item on the agenda is roll call of members.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Commissioner Woodcox, here. Commissioner Muntzen. Chairman Bitner.
I'm here. Commissioner Muntzen is on vacation today. Next is the approval of the agenda. Any additions, subtractions? We are gonna add something under other business. Commissioner Bakken is gonna discuss his trip to Washington. Other than that, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. Consideration of the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes and March third, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes and bills. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
So I did go through the bills and all looked in order, and I did sign those, so I would make a motion to approve the bills. We'll have a discussion on the minutes in a moment.
Yeah, motion is second to approve the bills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, meeting minutes. Who wants to?
Well, I broke those up just because I wasn't sure if anybody else had any concerns on the minutes 'cause it's kind of been ongoing for a while. I did go through the March third minutes and I didn't have any corrections to those, everybody else did. And then I don't know where you're still at on December sixteenth meeting minutes.
I do have an email that that discussed something with that.
Okay.
I've got so many emails that I'm not seeing it, so I would consider a motion to approve the March third, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes.
It's all move.
No motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the March third, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. There was something else on that December sixteenth that should be changed, and I'm just now finding it now, so. I'd rather carry.
I would move to table that then until our next meeting, so you can find that.
Okay. Motion to table.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. Consent agenda abatements. Anybody wanna pull anything out there for discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
No motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. The next thing is a public hearing regarding a plan on redesignating the elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to appointive office. And as I did on the last one, I'm gonna go ahead and turn that portion of the meeting over to Vice Chair Bakken.
Thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing regarding a plan on redesigning the elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to an appointive office. Just as far as guidelines, you must be a Burley County resident to speak. One topic for discussion, and that's the topic at hand. No discussion on previous Home Rule charters or other positions. Five-minute time limit. Speakers cannot yield time to another person. Speakers sign in and provide comment at the podium. Try not to repeat what was already stated. If you have already provided comments at a previous public hearing, please allow others an opportunity to speak. We've already collected your comments, and we do greatly appreciate that. Also, if anybody wants to see as per the duties of the auditor treasurer, as per the century code, there is a copy up there on the podium, so feel free to grab that. We do have some other public hearing dates that are coming up besides this regular meeting. March twenty-second, ten a.m., Wilton Memorial Hall, one oh five Dakota Avenue in Wilton. That'll be on BEC as well, March twenty-second. Two p.m., Sterling School, one eighteen Mackenzie Street in Sterling. March twenty-ninth, ten thirty a.m., at twenty twenty-one North Fifth Street in Bismarck, at the Bismarck-Burley Public Library. And April seventh, we'll be at our regular Burley County Commission meeting. So a lot of opportunities, and please, if you have not done so, you do have an opportunity to weigh in online at www.burley.gov. There is a public input form there available on our website, so feel free to weigh in there as well. And with that, I open up the public hearing. For anyone wishing to speak, please sign at the podium, state your name for the record, and
I already signed in earlier. Well, in this case, Chair Bakken and Commissioners. First of all, foremost, Steve, thanks for traveling to Washington on our behalf. Appreciate that. I got a meeting upstairs, so I'm just gonna read. And I know you put some conditions on and things, but it's, I can't reword it.
That's fine.
I've spent too much time in front of people today.
Oh, name for the record, just.
Oh, Mike Conley.
And a resident of Bismarck.
Yeah, resident of Bismarck and elected official, stating my opinion only. I would like to begin with, anything that I share tonight is on behalf of the citizens of Burley County, to assume different would be wrong. I am not here to defend the auditor. I've been told by people in this room that they think that's my intention. Let me be clear. I am here on behalf of how I view respect to the citizen. And that's my opinion, no more, no less. The auditor can own his decisions, regardless of my friendship with him and anyone else in the room. He does have a history of not attending meetings. This was something that was true when he was representing Bismarck as a part-time elected official, and he said as much during the videos that we all can see. I go and I watch an enormous amount of meetings, and many have witnessed as such over the last decade in my part-time availability. As a citizen, I am not able to defend how that leaves leadership and compromise on behalf of representing the citizen. I do think he has the qualities for his elected position, and only through his actions will that improve. I also want to mention, because I respect every seat here, is I will not be part of any recall efforts and any of that nature. I'm paraphrasing there out of respect. Number one reason I'm here today is to defend the checks and balances of citizen representation through the elected positions. In Burley County, that is currently eight positions, and I believe that it should always be eight positions without exception. If the county wanted to create one or two additional positions or add job descriptions under current positions to cover the topics like investments or administration nuances, then just do it. Leave the auditor position an elected position. The reason I say what I have is that this topic of appointment has been a topic since way before Mark was ever elected. In 2020, the citizens of Burley County overwhelmingly rejected the idea of changing the position to appointed. In 22, my application to be on the County Commission Home Rule Charter Subcommittee was accepted with the purpose of drafting language for asking the voters to delegate permission to the Burley County Commission to enact additional ordinance opportunities outside of their planning and zoning authority. Again, no more, no less. We had a handful of meetings, and when close to the end of the meetings, we as a Subcommittee were thrown a curveball, at best. During the eleventh hour, we were presented, to us, the wording of Article Three, which we were told was just a clerical adjustment to bring the words within the Home Rule Charter in compliance with state century code. Much like our current year state measure, adjusting wording in how the Ann Carlson school is depicted in century code. Many members of the committee, of the community, were paying attention, and I personally received numerous calls stating that this was an effort to overturn the initiated measure vote in 2020. Respecting the calls, I reached out to the state's attorney, and we had a long phone conversation. And based on that conversation, I felt assured that it was truly presented in the recently shared recording by another citizen, Dustin Gavrelo. In hindsight, always being 2020, I believe we were led astray in the impacts of the purpose of adding Article Three wording to the ballot language from the 2022 initiated measure. At first, I was trying to determine if it was just a mislead, or was it intentional or unintentional, just not genuine, or a flat-out lie. I've worked diligently during the last couple of months to define the difference, and it was not until Dustin Gavrelo's recent town hall meeting that I have determined that we were lied to in 2022. At the beginning of the meeting, when I started to share my experience, I was asked if I thought it was a lie, and I said I was not sure, but I definitely didn't think that the Article Three was presented in a genuine manner. Later, Dustin shared a response to an email he sent the state's attorney with the very question to the Article Three discussion from 2022. In paraphrasing, the response stated was that late in the recording that the citizen could contest the appointment and the petition for a vote by the people. Again, you can listen to the recording yourself. She did say it. The problem is, is that by saying it turns the context from changing the wording in the Home Rule Charter from just a clerical alignment with the century code to where we are today is significantly different. Thus, I am totally convinced that we were lied to in 2022. The voters went on to barely pass the measure. They had very little understanding of what the ramifications were going forward. Now I stand here before you today with a request. Have this put on the next ballot. We cannot put the genie back in the bottle of this problem, and thus, we have to grow through it. Do not move to a point without hearing from the voting citizens. Do not make the lie the foundation of what you act upon by making the citizens collect signatures in thirty days after a resolution to force a vote. If you do move to a point, have the state's attorney bring several copies of the petition to attending members to hand out. In that case, I will personally try to right that wrong, because I feel that was part, that impart is on me from the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Home Rule Charter Committee, which I was a member, and I will be collecting signatures. In summary, I will encourage the Burley County Commission to place the question as an initiative on the next election to the citizens, so we can right this wrong, and we, the county can adjust internally to serve the citizens more efficiently, so we can get back to the citizens' business. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Conley. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding the plan on redesignating elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to an appointed office? If you have not spoken before, please come up, state your name for the record.
Ryan Marcourt.
Did you sign in on the sheet?
I'm gonna sign here a sec. Yep.
And are you a Burley County resident?
Yes, sir, I am. Chairman, members of the committee. The Burley County Auditor's Office upheld election integrity, and I was, and I am here to share how verifying my signature ensured my ballot was counted, demonstrating my rigorous safeguards are essential to fair elections. I'd like to share my personal experience regarding the integrity of Burley County Auditor's Office and County Auditor Mark Spalinski. During the first week of early voting, I cast my absentee ballot, signing and dating it. Before a submission, a few days later, I received a letter and an email from the Auditor's Office requesting that I verify my signature. As I did, as it did not match the one on the record. At first, I was annoyed. I'd taken the time to vote, done everything right, or so, I thought, and now I was being told that my vote would not count. Worse yet, if I did not verify my signature, my vote could be contested during the canvassing process. Despite my frustration, I visited the County Auditor's Office to present my identification card. The staff retrieved my ballot and pointed out the issue. I had mistakenly used my initials instead of my full signature. In that moment, I understood it wasn't about inconvenience, it wasn't about bureaucracy, it was about election integrity. I provided my full signature, ensuring my vote would be counted. The experience demonstrated the diligence of the Auditor's Office, their commitment to verifying every ballot, even when it meant additional steps for voters, highlighting their dedication to maintaining the integrity of our elections. For that, I extend my gratitude to the Burley Counters, Burley County Auditor's Office and Auditor Mark Spalinski. Their work ensures that every valid vote is counted, every process is followed, and every election remains secure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Real quick, I'd like to, is it okay if Mark could speak?
Mark already spoke, but we can let him speak again, but yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Sign at the podium, state your name for the record, and are you a resident of Burley County?
Yes, Kyle Engelhardt, resident of Bismarck. I rise today in opposition to making the Auditor Treasurer an appointed position. This issue became, came before the public here just a couple of years ago, and the public did not support making it an appointed position. If we're gonna go down this path again, I think that it needs to go before the public again, but I mean, this was just a couple of years ago. And so, you know, there's a reason why it is an elected position and not an appointed position, and that's because the auditor should be accountable to the people and not to the commission, who, in a large part, as auditor, they're overseeing. And so, it would be best if it remained outside the appointment. That way, it's truly accountable to the people and not to the commission that it's overseeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Joe Gross. I had signed on that other sheet, is that okay?
What was your name again?
What's that?
What was the name?
Joe Gross.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, I'm a resident of Burley County. I was hoping that that pile of issues there would have been read before we commented. Is there any way we could do that, or no? No? Are we going to be finding out what's in there? We will? Okay. Because I think this looks like a broken system. I mean, I've heard the auditor say he's accountable to the people, but the people don't know what's going on. We don't know what's going on between you guys and the auditor's office and the employees, and, you know, we have no idea. Before we can vote on an auditor, it'd be nice to know, you know, what's been happening. So I know he's been giving his side on the radio, but we haven't heard the other side. And I just think if the system's broken, which it sure looks like it, and it was mentioned last week that this system is set up to fail, if you guys aren't getting along, or whatever, one of them's not doing their job, it would be much better if the auditor was accountable to the commissioners here. And I think it should be appointed position, and that's that's my thought, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Junt, and I live in Burley County. On the KFYR radio show on March the seventh of 2024, you said, our auditor said, "The Burley County Commissioners think they are my boss, and I only answer to the citizens of Burley County." Everyone here in this room, including the commissioners, are all citizens of Burley County. We have been attending these meetings because we want answers from all sides. Two weeks ago, a young lady testified that she does not trust the commission. I would like to say that we do. We completely trust these five commissioners and want and watch over all aspects, and we want them to watch all aspects and county operations and financial matters. According to North Dakota Century Code, the county auditor's position is more like a chief financial officer. Does our current auditor agree with this assertion? Does he or his office ever perform any audits of Burley County books and records? Could our county auditor please explain the reason, the reasons for filing the lawsuit against the North Dakota State Election Commission? We would like to know why the county election coordinator resigned two weeks before the November fifth, 2024, general election also. We understand there has been a complete turnover of the auditor's office staff over the last eighteen months. Why is that? Was our current county auditor involved in a negative campaign advertising, advertisement by Brighter Future of Burley against Burley County Commission Chief Brian Bitner? Put out one week before the November 2024 general election. Truth or false? Regardless of whether it's legal or not, as a Burley County auditor, is it right to send emails or texts during office hours urging citizens to vote against the Burley County Commission Chair who happens to hold the auditor's portfolio? No, it is not. In numerous appearances on KFYI Radio and a speech at the town hall in February 2025, why has our current auditor not taken responsibility for any of these issues? And what steps has he taken or is taking to resolve them? We would like the current auditor to explain the potential negative impact of the citizens of Burley County should he, should his position become appointed. The focus should be on the role of CFO for the county. And according to the Bismarck Tribune just days ago, on March the fifth, our current auditor asked the county's emergency management director, Ms. Singer, for the final budget. Yet told the Tribune, "You needed five months," so he could ensure the accuracy of the budget numbers. How could our current auditor have been spending five months on working on verifying numbers of a final budget he did not even have in his possession? Other than this hearing from the commissioners here, how would we have known all of this without them? Thank you for, thank you for your time. That'll be all.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak who has not spoke yet, please come forward. State your name for the record, sign in on the sheet, and are you a resident of Burley County?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Jonathan Hooker. I am a resident of Burley County. Local business owner. My wife and I are children's pastors over in Mandan. This has a lot of concern for me as I've looked at this. I've had the privilege of looking at this situation from a few different perspectives. One being just the specific situation of whatever's going on between, and I've heard the arguments. I had the privilege of having a lengthy conversation with Commissioner Muntzen about some of these issues and some of the concerns that you all rightly have, it sounds like. I've also, I'm, my, I'm, I'm family to Lisa Hart, so I know her, I've heard her side of the story. And the last thing I'm here to do, after I've heard all of this, is actually to bring up the situation with a specific person. I understand the concerns of, of the fact that we are managing a large budget here and that it requires some expertise. But that being said, we have, we have the value as citizens of being able to evaluate who we're electing and take a serious look and vote our conscience. If we don't like the people we see, we either can choose to put someone else up or choose not to vote for that person. In this case, we have, you know, the citizens chose to elect someone, and that role, and that's where I'm gonna add, is I want to keep the role and the person separate. I think the person, there's issues with some people. And if there's a need to recall someone in a position, we should do that as citizens. If there's legitimate issues that as citizens we see, we should, we should pursue a recall vote. With any elected official, period. My biggest concern in all of this is this idea of separating auditor from, of keeping the auditor separate from the commission. I have been, my roles have led me through multiple big, large businesses where I have worked with auditors extensively, both in technology as well as in financials. And as I've looked at how the auditors work, the, we always want to keep integrity between the business and the audit. And so, often, in most cases, we have outside audits, just for this reason. Now, I appreciate what was said by, and I forgot his name, the first person who spoke today. If there are specific roles that need to be peeled away, well, maybe we should look at doing that. Maybe that should be a vote that's sent to the people to, to look at peeling certain, certain pieces of, of the management of certain parts of the finances away from that role, and maybe, and make it a truly, truly an audit role. But the office of the audit needs to be, it needs to maintain its integrity. And so, I'm standing here in opposition of, of this, of moving this position into an appointed role. And so I'm standing here in opposition of, of this, of, of moving this position into an appointed role because of the fact we need to maintain that integrity. Allow the voters to make the decision. If it needs to be brought again, bring it again. I was surprised. I guess I should have remembered. I voted back in '22 and I need to go review my vote back in '22 as to what I did. I'm fairly certain I would have probably voted against it at that point. If it needs to go back to the voters, take it back to the voters. But, but my stance is just that. I stand against, and I ask you all to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little reminder too, if anybody wants a copy of the Duties of the Auditor Treasure as per the Century Code, because they're, they are laid out very specifically in the Century Code, there is a copy of those at the little sign up table by the piling. Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Sign in at the podium, state your name, and are you a resident of Burley County?
I am. I don't know what this number six means, but I'll put six there. My name is Trina Schweitzer. I'm from Burley County.
Your name again?
Oh, I'm from, I am Trina Schweitzer, and I'm from Burley County. And I'm here and standing in opposition to, to changing the auditor's office from an elected position to an appointed position. I believe in checks and balances, and I think it needs to stay this way. I've always voted against it, and I will continue to vote against it. I think it's just too easy for, if it becomes appointed, if there is something between the auditor doesn't like and you guys do like, you can just fire him and he's gone and you just get a new one. And that's not serving the people. And so I would ask you to please leave this position elected so we can elect our own auditor. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Second call for public hearing? You already spoke, Ryan.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. Nope, we're just, nope, we're just going through and, one and done. Who?
He spoke twice at the last meeting, so.
Then, so the recourse on that is, the recourse on that is to file online, so there's comment opportunity online. We're just taking new people who have not had an opportunity to speak yet. Anyone wishing to come up and speak? No, limit one per session. And then, one per session.
So with the commission's permission, I would request an equal opportunity as these gentlemen had last time, speaking twice before.
Okay, but you spoke at the last meeting.
I did. I have not spoken at this meeting.
Yeah.
So this is an opportunity for you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak before me? I'm not holding anyone else back. May I speak?
You spoke at the last meeting, so we already heard what you had to say, and you were opposed to, to separating it out. So if there, if there's a presentation you'd like to share with the commission, feel free to do that. You can also register any comments online.
Well, my, my position hasn't changed.
Right.
And I would like to respond to some of the comments that the commissioners had made, and I see Mr. Munson has gotten one that was spoken to him.
No, Tim. Tim, no. You spoke at the last one, so you don't get to speak at the next one.
Well, why did he get to speak twice?
He didn't speak tonight.
He spoke twice.
Not tonight. He did not speak tonight.
And he said he spoke twice, yes, last time, so why can't I speak?
Not that, you only get one.
This is a violation of equal protection.
You get one meeting to speak at.
This is a, this is, no, that's not the rules.
You get, yes, it is. You get one meeting to speak at. You spoke at the last meeting.
I'm not worried about that.
You spoke at the last meeting.
Well, why are you allowing these people to speak twice at the last meeting and not me at this time?
We let anybody that wanted to speak twice at the last meeting.
Well, you didn't have that in the rules, though. Why are you changing them now?
That was the last meeting.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, let me just.
Okay, you spoke at the last meeting.
Let me just tell you what I want to say, and I'll be done.
Briefly.
Sure. Okay.
No.
Everyone, no one is perfect. You guys aren't perfect. I'm sure Mark isn't perfect. He gets an annual audit on his office, right? I have not heard any problems that have been raised from that. Okay, and if there are problems, well, sometimes it's clerical errors. Sometimes it's something that got missed, like I guess there was a $3.7 million fund that was found that was half of under Mr. Bittner's tenure, but you guys have a responsibility to focus on the position and not the man. The, the problem is not Mark isn't doing his job.
Well, I don't care who's there. I'm not concerned about the individual. I am concerned about the job.
Well, you haven't presented any evidence that the auditor's office would work better if it was appointed. All, all that says is that you would have more control, okay? But you already control the duty, the roles that he does. You can prescribe him work in any many fashions of the policies that you want.
No.
Okay, no, 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 Tim.
That, that you do not set policies for the auditor's office.
Right, we don't control.
You, you know, he has, he has his duties and descriptions by the North Dakota Century Code, but the policies of how he carries those out is set by you guys. Yeah, well, I believe one of your requirements was an annual report or quarterly report, I don't remember which, for submitted to you guys that hadn't, that hadn't been presented. That you changed it to an annual requirement. You changed it by a policy, which is why the newly hired finance guy gets up here and says, hey, this has never been done. I'm going to go do this. Well, yeah, when you change it, you make a new requirement by policy, or let's talk about the investment policies. You guys can change those policies. If you think that his office isn't getting you the gains that you need, you change the policy that determine how he invests. That's not a Mark problem. That's a commission problem.
Entirely wrong.
No.
And you guys, you guys. You're saying that you don't control the policy of how they make the investments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have an investment policy that the county has. He is not, but, now, don't interrupt.
That you said.
He is not.
You, you said it.
The county commission does.
The county commission sets it. So if you don't like how it's going, change it.
If he keeps interrupting, how can we?
Let him speak, Tim.
Okay, so now, Jerry, were you the one complaining about him not taking your notes, or was that Mr. Munson?
I don't know what you're talking about. It probably wasn't me.
Last meeting, the complaint was that he's not, he's not taking notes for all, for his parks director, whatever, subcommittee, right? He's not your personal secretary.
Yes, he is. He's the secretary to the board.
He is the board secretary.
Exactly, exactly.
So at the board meetings, only the board meetings, he is taking the notes.
Well, you're wrong about that.
Tim.
Now, now, if you have a policy that assigns that.
We're getting, we're getting off the.
If you have a policy that, that, that says there's something different.
Yes, Tim.
Then, then open it up to us, but that's not what's listed on the website.
Tim.
Now, secondly, secondly, there was an accusation that Mark just isn't doing his job, that his staff is having to do his job for him. That's what they're there for! What the heck do you guys hire people for?
Tim.
Right? Okay, now.
This, this commission has some concerns. This has got nothing to do with Mark. It's about the duties of the position.
Really?
Period. As per Century Code.
Really? That's, that stack is all personal. Everything I've heard from you guys is all personal.
Okay, well, that's.
There hasn't been a single.
That's your opinion. Tim, we're, we're done. If you have something to pass out, please pass it out.
Well, now, now, here's the other thing. You guys are going to Mark, and this is another personal attack that you keep going back to and saying, Mark hasn't, doesn't have the qualifications, although by law, state law he does. He doesn't have the experience. You want to increase those, and you're told you can't do that by law. But then, you don't have any factual data saying Mark's failing in his duties and responsibilities. I haven't seen anything presented to the public, okay? Yet, on August 5th of last year, Commissioner Bittner and someone else, I didn't catch who said it, admitted that you don't know how to do the third most important job under the North Dakota Century Code. Okay, now, you also said Mark has, has too much, too many job duties and responsibilities. Mark and the finance director got up here, and you had a resolution, and he asked, I want you to clarify what you're asking for, that we're going to do the taxes at the same, same dollar figure as last year. And that affects a change in middle levy rates. Okay, and you said, oh, it's the first time I've heard of this. So you've been assessing taxes, that's the third listed duty of the commission, for how many years, and you don't know how they're figured out? You and another commissioner both said you can't do your job. What about the weed board? You guys, you guys kicked everyone off the weed board, or they resigned. I don't know the whole history of it.
No, this isn't about the weed board, Tim. Tim, this isn't about.
And you're breaking the state law. I have that portfolio, and I'll tell you something.
Do you have any people that have? This is, this is.
No, no, we're, we're done. We're, we're done here. We are done here. It's not about the weed board. We're not discussing the weed board.
Sure.
That's something we've been very public about and have discussed openly at this table.
Get it too. It's our job.
Because it's legal. And because we're also the board, we're also the board of health.
It's a process that takes time to get fixed. We're done talking about that. So, Tim, if you have something to pass out, please pass it out, because you're done.
Here, here, here are your duty, duties and responsibilities as a commission. There are 14 pages listed here.
Then pass them out.
I have one copy. I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Mark has eight pages in total and fewer specified duties.
I will get copies of this and get it distributed among the board.
So my, my, my sincere request for you guys is, stop wasting our time. This has been voted on twice. Overwhelmingly, the population don't like it. Overwhelmingly, what you have heard at these meetings, the population doesn't want you to change it.
Your one voice, so thank you for your voice.
I am one voice, and I'm referring to the other voices that you have heard. So if you've got a problem with Mark.
You're not the only voice, and it's not about Mark. It's about the position and doing the job.
Prove to me it's not about Mark. Prove, that's, that proved to me.
Okay. Tim, you're done.
Can anyone, can anyone prove to me why it's not about Mark?
You're done. Yeah, yeah. No.
Go ahead. We would love to hear. It's been asked for at least once by the time of the.
Good evening. My name's Travis Jensen. Lifelong resident of Burley County. Have dealt with you guys on several occasions. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after what we just witnessed, we got some problems. You guys want to tell us these problems lie with the auditor? That's what we've led to, been led to believe, is that these problems that we're seeing here and that anybody who has followed along with Burley County over the last five to seven years has been led to believe is that this, this is all the auditor's problem. This is what's causing it. You guys have lost control. And if this meeting has not shown that, you guys have lost control. It's, it's as simple as that. You can all go back and look at your political downfalls. So before we start pointing the finger at the auditor for what he's done or what he hasn't done, or, you know, Jerry, one of your comments at the last meeting was, well, is he qualified? Do you feel he's qualified? I'm not sure you're qualified. Quite frankly, I'm not sure you're qualified, because if you remember right, the public spoke and they gave you your walking papers not so long ago, and you got reelected. We can all do better, right? Go ahead.
I've been elected six times, so it's not too bad, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, the people spoke, though. That's, that's what I'm getting at, is.
Yes, they did.
They gave you your walking papers, you ran again, they gave you another chance to hopefully change, maybe found a newfound confidence in you. I don't know. But we can sit here, guys, and we can look at each one of you and say you've had political downfalls. Steve, City of Bismarck gave you your walking papers, you know, but we spoke. We had the right as citizens to decide that for ourselves, what is best for our community. I've been told by, you know, several of you that there's people contacting you because they have concerns. I guess I'm not hearing them.
I'm sorry, you're not what?
I'm not hearing those concerns about the appointment.
Can I, can I interrupt and?
Yeah, go ahead.
Take one, one instance that I got today.
Go ahead.
Okay, I got a letter from a, a Bismarck resident, Burley County taxpayer, just today, and he, we approve these abatements all the time. We do them every, every month. Well, his abatement was approved in January, which means he got a tax reduction because of Homestead Tax Credit or something, misappropriate, whatever. He's supposed to get a check back from the county. This was in January, I don't know exactly the date, 7th or 8th, something like, first meeting in January. You know when he got his check? He hasn't gotten it yet. And reason why? Because he came, he came in in February and said, it's been 30 days. Where's my check? And he's got a right to say that. And where, where is it supposed to be done by? Our chief financial officer right over here. It hasn't been done. He came back another 30 days. Now, this is like last week, and he, he said, where's my check? Oh, we're too busy. We just haven't, it'll be another three or four weeks. So here we are. This is his job. We send him on normally every month. We should, we have, get him every month. He hasn't gotten his in two months. Now, that's one of the small, small things that is happening. So just one. So that's a, a, for instance, right there. And there's a lot of them. I mean, there's 50 of them we've.
Well, yeah, we supposedly got a pile of paperwork. They're almost three inches high. That's being kind of just flaunted in front of us. You know, like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on speaking. I was here to observe, but after watching the circus that has taken place, you guys are all at fault. I'll be quite honest with you, bringing up the whole real charter thing, a lot of us have concerns about that because we feel that the committee was misled. And that goes back to the picking and choosing that brings some serious concerns. You guys, you guys are bullying, just like we seen with when the public health, you know, some of us watched these meetings for quite a while, and we watched City of Bismarck come up here and, you know, basically try to strong arm the county into this whole public health debacle. Some of us were watching that meeting. We remember how that went down. What I've been seeing here, trying to look at it objectively, because I don't really like any of you, to be honest with you, I think you guys have shown that none of you are really leaders anymore. I used to have a great respect for, for a couple of you, but you've all let this go down a road that it should never have gone down. So you brought up the abatements, right? You opened the door for that. As a leader and as a representative, that individual that contacted you.
Yes.
What are you going to do about it?
What am I going to do about it? It's his job.
Well, yeah, but he contacted you.
I'm going to follow. I already, I already contacted the person, said, we'll get on it.
Because I'll be quite frank, if I'm looking at this, trying to look at this objectively, I'm looking at, you guys want to appoint because you got control. You guys have not addressed whether she misspoke intentionally or not intentionally. You guys have not addressed it. Some of us want to know, because there was a couple gentlemen that have said themselves, they feel like they misled many of us who made phone calls to them and said, what do you think? And they went off the information that was presented to them, but you guys don't want to address that. Like I said, we've all had downfalls. This board has done great things, but lately, you guys need to be ashamed of yourselves. These aren't the leaders that I don't think any of us elected. If I had my op, you know, we talked about recall tonight. I think we should recall all of you, start over.
Thank you, Travis. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Second call for public hearing? Third and final call for public hearing? Public hearing is, come up. State your name for the record, sign in at the podium, or are you a Burley County resident?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Francis Schweitzer. I live in Lincoln, but I don't know if you need to do that, but. I just wanted to say that us young people, we are not involved very often. I just wanted to let us all know that we're, we're paying attention and there's scary stuff happening all over the place, but I just think we should always have the right as a people to vote for every, every position, honestly, and, but it doesn't happen a lot of times. But I just think for the city auditor, we should definitely be able to vote on who's going to be city auditor. That's all I just wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Third and final call for public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Just a little reminder, our next public hearing will be on March 22nd at Wilton Memorial Hall. And then, it's 10pm, or 10am, 10, 2pm at Sterling School on the same day. The following will be on March 29th at 10:30am at the Bismarck Public Library, Bismarck Burley Public Library, and then And then, uh, uh, the final public hearing will be on April seventh at our regularly scheduled commission meeting. If you have not done so, feel free to weigh in, add comments, uh, and, uh, at, uh, www.burley.gov. Uh, we do have a public input form available on the website. Uh, so with that, I will pass this meeting back to Chair Bitner.
Thank you, Commissioner Locken. Should let you know a little bit about, uh, a little bit about that stack of stuff. Um, it's been going on for quite a while and the public hearing is closed. Um, so we've been keeping track of, of a lot of issues and I'd be happy to share that information, um, with anybody that wants to spend the time to go through it. Um, I should, I should start though with talking a little bit about an article that was in the Bismarck Tribune, um, Saturday. One of the things that was said in that letter was, was that there was a cut to the senior citizens budget. And I, and I think that was probably an, uh, uh, misstatement, but, um, there was no cut to the senior citizens budget. What happened during the budget hearings is they came in with a fairly large request for some maintenance-related items, some different things like that. And, um, and the director of the, the senior ser, senior center, um, decided that she could, uh, uh, do away with some of the increases for this year. So as I think, I don't know, fifty-four thousand, fifty-seven thousand or something.
Fifty-seven.
Um, so it was, it was, there was never any cut to the services or the programs of the senior center. It was kind of a cut to some landscaping and, and some of those things that didn't need happening. Um, so that was one thing. Uh, another thing that, that really is serious to me, uh, since I hold two port, a number of the portfolios that are, um, involved here, um, there was a comment that, um, the finance department was, was specifically or essentially, um, forbidden from working with the auditor on the budget. And I'm here to tell you folks, that never, ever happened. Uh, my position is for the finance department to do what they can for the benefit of Burley County because they do work under the county commission. And, um, in, in case there's any question about that, I'm sure the finance director would be willing to, um, speak about that very briefly.
Chair Bitner and Commissioners, um, yeah, that, I never, I never took any of our conversations, Chair Bitner, as, as forbidding us to work on the budget. Uh, in fact, we met, um, we met three different times with the auditor treasurer, um, to go over the budget line by line, essentially, or different parts of the budget, line by line. Uh, the, the first that I recall was, I think it was in September, or it was at least prior to the final budget hearing. And the auditor treasurer asked myself and the deputy finance director to, to do this, to come and meet with him and go through the budget. And we went to his office and we sat in his office and went through line by line. Um, I think it was the general revenues, uh, there may have been some other parts of the budget that we reviewed. And the second time was recently, um, again, as I recall, the auditor treasurer requested that we meet and, and we went line by line through the budget that had been passed, was myself, deputy finance director, the deputy auditor treasurer, the elections coordinator, who's kind of our jack of all trades, he's, he's also our accountant. And, um, the, um, the auditor treasurer, and we met and went through the budget line by line. And that was, I think, in February. And then we had yet another meeting in February to go through, uh, I think it was the transfers in and out and maybe some other items, line by line. So we have been, uh, you know, assisting. And, um, prior to this, we had met in May of twenty-twenty-four, it was myself, uh, the deputy finance director, deputy auditor treasurer, auditor treasurer and HR director. We met to discuss, uh, the budget, the job duties, and, um, that there was some disagreement, the auditor treasurer felt very strongly that, uh, I was essentially responsible for the budget. Um, he produced my, uh, job description and began reading through my job description. And I, I found myself repeatedly redirecting him to the first word of many of the job duties, which was oversee. And so, yes, the budget is, is in my job description, but it's an oversight position. And, um, and so that was kinda maybe how it all, that was the first meeting, I guess, that we had on the budget.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate that, and Commissioner Woodcutt.
Can I, our final budget was approved back in September, right, of last year?
Correct.
And it was just posted last week. Do you have any reason why it took six months, six months to post the budget, final budget? So people could understand and read it and peruse it and complain about it, whatever it was? Took six months, was there any reason why that, that you know of?
Well, maybe, I mean, there, there might be some reason for delay because we had, uh, I think after the final budget, I think there was, correct me if I'm wrong, two other times that the budget came, uh, before the commission, prior to the deadline. So there isn't, I think it's an October deadline to, by, by state law to pass the budget. So we were within that deadline, but I think there was, there were two other times that came before the commission after that. Is there a reason? Probably not that I can think of, I mean, some of the reasons we were given is something to do with the accounting software, I, I don't think that's relevant. Um, I had questions, concerns about the budget, I, I put the, the, posting the budget to the website, I, I put those in an email to the, uh, county auditor in January. Um, but no, I, I can't think of a good reason.
Commissioner Woodcutt.
And I understand that their auditor asked our emergency manager to post the budget. Why would that be?
Well, I think to post, posting the budget, I think our emergency manager, um, much like our elections coordinator, wears many hats. One of them is the website, you know, person. So that would be maybe the reason to post it. I did not see that, I, I'm sure I, I don't recall that email, I'm sure I saw it. Um, but-
I'm not talking about an email, I'm talking about what actually happened was, he asked the emergency manager to post it, which is his responsibility, not our emergency manager. That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah. It, it may be in her capacity as the website sort of person, I'm, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lee. Um, there was, uh, also a mention, and I did pull out one thing out of the stack. Um, the big concern I had, uh, was that people would think that it was some sort of a personal thing. Um, but I need to point out to you that, that we've had problems, um, even before this. Um, the, for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, which was actually under two auditors, so twenty-twenty-three was under two different auditors. So the results for the twenty-twenty-three state audit would be reflective of both persons in that position. So it's not, this is not a question of whether it's personally anybody. So, um, they ask you some questions and then they give you some findings at the end of the audit. And I think there was mention about, uh, that they didn't find any mishandling or, or something with money. Uh, the problem is, um, under internal control over financial reporting. The question is, material weaknesses identified? The answer is yes, on this form. Uh, significant deficiencies identified, not considered to be material weaknesses, yes. And then non-compliance material and financial statements noted, no. And they go on to give us some of the, the, what's called adjustments to the books. So, right now, the finance department from Burley County is in the process of going through the books of Burley County to make all necessary corrections. And the last I heard, they're up to approximately thirty corrections to the, to the accounts for Burley County. Hopefully, we get those all corrected and anything else we find before it goes to the state audit, because the goal is to have a cleaner audit than, than here. Um, so, some of the things that had to be done with the general fund, uh, we had to establish a due from other funds asset to offset negative cash balances in special revenue and debt service funds. Uh, due from other funds, there was a cash error of one point seven two million. Uh, remove February twenty-twenty-four state aid from intergovernmental receivables. And the revenue into intergovernmental, into intergovernmental receivables was four hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty-four thousand. Reclassify interest income to change in investment market value, um, one hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-three. Uh, to record reimbursement from Morton County for Burley Morton Detention Center. Expenditures over to service revenues of a hundred forty-eight thousand. Reclassify salary expenses to contracted services expenses, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy. Reclassify interest income from internet service fund to transfer in, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. Uh, special revenue fund, different subject here. Establish a due to other funds asset to offset negative cash balances in the special revenue fund with the general fund. Okay, so this is different from that other one. That's one point six nine one million there. Adjustments to decrease inventory for twenty-twenty-three used amounts, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars. Adjustment to record retainage payable from expenditures to retainage payable, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty. Reclassify interest income to change in investment market value, uh, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and two. Special revenue fund, reclassify prairie dog funds from the transfer into an intergovernmental revenue, four million, one hundred and sixty thousand. Reclassify miscellaneous revenue to intergovernmental revenue and sale of assets, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-nine. Another debt service fund established a due to other funds asset to offset negative cash balances in debt service fund with the general fund, thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-six. Adjustment to record of book activities for the twenty-twenty sales tax bond, thirty-one million, nine hundred and twenty-four, eight hundred and sixteen. Um, plus, uh, intergovernmental receivable, two million, one hundred and six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two. Principal and expense on that, two million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Interest and fees, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. Net change fund balance, um, that's where you move those other things to. Internal service fund, prior period adjustment to record miss payable from twenty-twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. Reclassify interest expense to transfer out, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. Government-wide activities, um, prior period adjustment to remove Sixty-Sixth Street project from CIP, reclassify assets, number, number, numbers, to CIP and to add back asset forty-fifty-three to capital assets, three hundred and fifty-one thousand. Adjustment to record current period capital asset additions for assets forty-five seventy-eight and forty-five seventy-nine, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty. Adjustments for the Water Resource District, fund level adjustments to record audit-found payables, hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine. To record retainage payable expenditures to payable, eleven thousand and fifty. So that's, to say that there was not a mishandling, um, within the books would be a, a real gross understatement. And, and I do want to point out that we know that that is over the course of more than one auditor. So, nobody's gonna sit here and say it was just this one person and it's a personal thing. Now, that's one thing, and we are gonna get into some more of that, um, I think at additional public hearings yet, because it's obvious, it's a lot of information to unpack. Um, if, if anyone, if anybody wants to meet with me, you sir, you sir, whatever, you know, you wanna go through that information, we sure can. Um, I'd like to get the meeting back onto meeting business unless there's, anybody wants to comment about that thing I just read. Okay, thank you. Next item, county engineer Marcus Hall.
Yeah, anyone in the public?
No, not you. Come on, come on, you know, I'm, I'm joking, all right?
No, 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 you-
I'll, I'll give you a very small window.
I'm, I'm not an auditor, right? I'm, I'm familiar with generally accounted, generally accepted accounting principles, right? And, and the function of the audit, as you said, was to make sure that when it goes to the state audit, it's, it's cleaner. You're a business owner.
Mm-hmm.
You file taxes, have you ever had to file a correct tax return?
No, never.
You've never had to, uh, change your, but, your bank account balance to match everything? You have everything perfectly recorded.
I, I pay guys to do that for me though, but I pay guys who have those qualifications.
Okay, anyway, all those things that you-
But it's not about me.
All those things that you, you mentioned are, there are some structural things. One of them is a lack of segregation of duties, which you might not, I read it. You might not have mentioned that, right? That's, does he have the peak personnel to run his office with enough separation that you can have two-person controls? Right? And that's, that's not a, a finding of fault, that's a, hey, there's a risk here. Okay? So, I didn't find, I didn't find any-
That's why we have, that's why we have the finance department separate from the auditor department. Cause that is, that checks and balances, like you're talking about.
Are there, are there things that the finance director's doing that you're blaming Mark for? He's the new guy, right?
He's, uh, the finance director has the responsibility of oversight under the Burley County Commission. That job is to basically-
Oversight is a supervisor?
Yeah, oversight.
Okay.
You know, to, to, like I said, there's over, you know, I read, what was it, nineteen or twenty deficiencies off that, um, state audit, right?
Sure.
And right now, we're over thirty before we can get it to the state audit. So we're making corrections-
Yeah, and that's the purpose of that.
Through the finance department.
That's the purpose of that, you do, you do the audit, you have an auditor to make sure that all the finances are right, and, and-
Well, except that, you see, that the finance director is fixing it after it's gone through the auditor's office, okay?
They, they work together, right? They're not, they're not silos.
Um, we're gonna move on, okay? You know, I'm not, I'm having trouble getting through to you.
My point is that what you're talking about, they're not, not material mishandling of the money, it's, it's a list of things that need to be corrected, because that's what you do at the end of the month, you balance your checkbook.
Did you, did you hear the amounts that I was talking about?
Three point seven million dollars missing for thirty years?
Uh, uh, we didn't have three point seven million dollars missing, it was off books, um.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
In our budget, which spilled over this, you were, you remember, we had to raise taxes, seven and a half mils. Remember that?
What, what are mils?
Mils?
Taxes.
Tax rates.
That's your taxes. You had to raise the mils or you had to raise, raise the amount of taxes, both?
We had a raise, we were short money.
Not, not if your property values increase.
Let me finish this little tale here. But unfortunately, three point seven million wasn't shown on the books.
Okay, and when did that go missing?
We can't go in and do the books, it's not our job, so, all you people, I'm not done. So all these people out here, I want them to remind you, it was never necessary to raise your taxes, but we can only go by the information that comes out of the auditor's office on what's in accounts and what's not. And if they don't disclose to us that they're short, that, not short, but they're not showing three point seven million, well, we gotta raise your taxes, and that spilled over last year and into this year. So in other words, we actually have overtaxed you eight million dollars on account of that. And we don't have access to going in there and doing that, we can't go in and say, get your stuff straightened. So-
Yeah, you could make a meeting with them and say, hey-
Do you think that's right to all these people out here?
When did it go missing?
That their tax goes up like that, it was unnecessary.
When did it fall off the books?
Pardon me?
When did it fall off the books?
When wasn't it put back on the books is the question.
When was it, wasn't, did it fall off the books?
When a person-
My understanding is it was like thirty years ago.
No.
How many?
Wait a minute.
No.
Anybody that owns a business, when you get in there and you buy another business, the first thing you look at is the books. And you, in, the banks that we have money sitting in are constantly sending, this is-
So I had a couple of commissioners chubbing here.
So the thing about it is, if it isn't counted, we can't count it when we do the budget, cause we don't know it's-
When did it go missing? When did it fall off the books? Right, cause if it didn't fall off the books in the last, uh, two years, it's, it's not Mark's.
It wasn't put on the books.
It was never put on the books, when was it supposed to have been put on the- When was it supposed to have been put on the books?
Year and a half ago.
Okay? When, how, if it was supposed to be put on the books a year and a half ago, so it's more than a year and a half ago, then it was lost off the books, right?
It was in his, his...
It was in a bank account that no one knew was there. Okay, we can agree on that? When did that, when was that account created?
Why are we arguing about this?
I, I have no idea. I'm going to ask you, I'm not going to, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
The short, the short and the long of it was, information from the auditor's office came, comes to us every year when we're doing preliminary budget. They say we're going to take in, and I estimate, say, we're taking in 40 million dollars in taxes, but we're going to be spending 43. So, we got to raise taxes, 3 million dollars to take care of that. They came with the information saying you need 3.7 million dollars more, so we raised, and I, I wasn't on there, I was, by two years I wasn't elected. Anyway, they raised the 3.7 million. Another, next year, no, don't interrupt, don't interrupt.
You've been on for two years.
Don't, don't interrupt. The next year, we did the same thing. We've had 8.1 million dollars of, of, of extra taxes that were assessed that should not have been.
It's true.
That should not have been entirely because of the estimates, that the auditor's job is to give us those estimates, so there we go.
But, he has the files that he has.
Pardon me?
He has the files that he has. If, if, if he lost 3.7 million dollars, you should fire him today.
We can't.
We can't.
That's why we're here.
But, but none of you have said that he has lost it. You said that he didn't put it on the books fast enough.
It wasn't on the books, and there's a big difference. I didn't say he lost it.
Sure, sure.
We did not know that account had that money in it, and we had to make up for it in the budget, so we raised taxes.
Okay, if you have a computer, if you have a computer with a hidden file...
Pardon me?
If you have a computer with a hidden file...
Do what?
A computer with a hidden file.
Why are we letting him?
You open it up, and you're looking there, and you don't see it. How do you know it's there? How does, how does Mark know it's there?
I told you, the banks send you out statements.
Yeah, but if those, if those statements aren't coming to the proper address for whatever reason...
I'm done, I'm done.
I don't know. Do you have any proceeds?
All I could tell you is, 8 million dollars is atrocious.
Stop, stop the argument.
To tax, stop.
Just, just work it out with him. That's your name, just work it out with him, and he'll be good.
Do you understand the word "stop"?
Because there's no auditing being done by the auditor, I don't need to change. Our auditor doesn't aud, our auditor is not a licensed auditor.
Yeah, I got that right.
Okay, Marcus, you're next.
Good evening, commissioners. I have one item on the agenda. It's a developer's request. Under our pavement policy, a developer may make a request to waive the pavement policy. Under the current policy, they're required to construct and pave at least one roadway in a proposed subdivision, connect, two to connect to the existing paved highway system. Sky Haven and Lincoln Township, and there's a map included in your packet showing this particular proposed subdivision, is planning on a one-lot subdivision. As part of this particular subdivision, they'd be required to pave about, and construct about one-half mile of roadway. Granting this waiver does not preclude the county and township from requiring the property owners to share the costs of construction and paving these roads sometime in the future. However, it does allow the developer to move forward on this particular subdivision. There are two resolutions in your packet, I would recommend approval of those resolutions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Bakken.
One question, Marcus. It is in our packet listed two different ways, Sky Haven and Ski Haven. So, just for clarification...
That, that is correct. I'll make sure that that's the correct spelling.
Because it is Sky Haven, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, with that correction, I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. County State's Attorney Julie Lawyer, salary variance request. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. In your packets, you'll find a memo from me regarding a salary variance request for our investigator position. The person that we've offered the position to comes to us with, as I gave you his resume, that's obviously not a public record yet, since he's just a candidate and not an employee, but you can see the depth of his experience there. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and nearly 30 years in law enforcement, 24 years of which was investigations. For our minimum qualifications for our investigator, we require a four-year degree and five years of investigative experience. He's got 19 years of experience over and above our minimum qualifications, which is why I'm asking for the variance to start him at a step nine. And I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? What are your wishes?
Second.
Motion second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead.
One question, Julie. So, where does this put us on workforce?
We did hire, offer, conditional offers to four individuals, four attorneys who are graduating in May. They're scheduled to take the bar in July. If they do pass the bar, then they will be eligible to start practicing once they're licensed attorneys, which would be September or October. And with that, we would have all of our full-time positions filled, and we just have a part-time position that would be open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion regarding Burley County Courthouse rental. Who's got, who's got that?
This was placed on the agenda at the request of the Bismarck Burley Commission's Joint Committee, and so they requested me to put this on the agenda, just basically just to begin the discussions on the rentals and see how long we might, may or may not be renting from them for 2026.
Commissioner Bakken.
So, I am the Burley County Representative, along with our Auditor Treasurer on that. Basically, what they were looking at is trying to space plan as the Providence Building's coming onboard. So, it was a discussion about our use of the City-County Office Building, and as part of that discussion was where we're at with the lease agreement for the Burley County Courthouse rental. Basically, just some housekeeping, and they're getting into their preliminary budget, so they were just asking that we're aware of that, and where we are in our budget process as well.
Okay. With respect to scheduling or anything with the Providence Building, we, we obviously have not received bids yet.
Correct.
And as part of that process, we anticipate that there will be liquidated damages and there will be a, a set timeline, but the difference is, on this particular bid, the, the contractor that wins the bid would negotiate with the architects and the owners to come to a completion date. So, then they're going to, they're going to have to buy into it, they're going to say, okay, we're going to be done in whatever amount of time, and then we'll know when to expect that, that we would be ready to move or what have you.
Okay, and then the question on the...
And I'm not aware of any change or any, any need for a change on rental at the courthouse.
Okay, and that was my thoughts on that, because I, I didn't have any indication that we had an appetite of changing any of that current structure, so...
No, and I'm not aware of anything that, as far as buildings and grounds, that is one of, one of my portfolios, nobody's mentioned to me any need for, you know, anything additional over there, so...
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that one? County Emergency Manager Mary Singer, consideration of burn restrictions. Welcome, Mary. Guys might have noticed it's kind of dry outside.
Yes, it is. Chair and Commissioners, you have before you the fire emergency and burn restrictions tied to the daily fire danger rating. The fire chiefs have approached me and are, I've heard back from all of them except for one, and they are all in support of instituting their restrictions.
Okay. Before we, before we go into a motion or something on that, I want to point out, great teamwork between Burley County staff. Recently, we got a, an email from a citizen that talked about a, a wood pile that was on fire, or still burning at his neighbor's place, and I forwarded that to Mary, and she forwarded it to the Sheriff's Department and the Rural Fire Department, and everybody got on it, and apparently, nobody was home. That fire was, was burning there in the yard, and that wind was forecasted to kick up that day. I think it was Sunday last...
Last Saturday or Sunday.
Saturday or Sunday, whatever it was. But anyway, everybody got together, went up there and put out the fire, and everything was, was, was good. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that responded and was part of that, including you.
People appreciate how dry it is out there in our high wind conditions, so...
Sure. So, in lieu of getting the wind to stop blowing and getting a little moisture, I would move to approve the burn ban.
Second.
Motion second to approve the burn ban as presented, and there is, this will be on the website, I'm sure, so you'll be able to see, because there is particulars, and the burn ban is tied to the Range Line Fire Danger Index here in North Dakota, so, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mary. Other business, Commissioner Bakken wants to give us a little bit of report on his sightseeing trip to Washington, DC.
Yeah, so, had an opportunity to go speak for the Burley County Commission in Washington, DC. A group of about 60 or so people from across eight states, Montana, North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, Illinois, and Indiana. Were all meeting in Washington, DC to meet with their legislators and discuss the constraints and nuances of carbon sequestration. So, I had a great opportunity to go meet with some upper-level staff of our two senators. Did not meet with our senators, did not meet with our representative either, and her staff was actually rather disappointing. I will say that a lot of other states did meet with their Legislative Caucus, and had an opportunity to meet with some of the other states' representatives as well. The discussion really going on in Washington, DC, and there's a draft in, on the House side bipartisan concerning the 45Q and 45Z tax credits. So, gathered a lot of great information on that. Getting rid of them, I, I would think is probably not going to happen, because there seems to be about 21 Republicans that are holding out for free green money as well. However, there's probably a good discussion that's to be had about overhauling what that program looks like, whether or not that program stays in the purvey of the IRS or moves over to more of a commerce or a grant program with, with caps on it. But it was very insightful, spoke with a lot of great people that are fighting various different pipeline projects and carbon sequestration issues in their home states, and gleaned a lot of great information in DC, and I want to thank everybody that I met out in Washington, and I definitely want to thank the legislators and representatives that had an opportunity to meet with, and some of their staffs as well. So, it was some pretty good discussions.
Commissioner Schwab.
Speaking of Summit Carbon...
By the way, is there a representative of Summit Carbon Solutions here?
Didn't he go along with you on that trip?
Uh, no, no, did not. Sorry, Commissioner.
When the ruling came down and, or the law was signed in, in South Dakota, that they couldn't, couldn't use eminent domain, there was an article in the Tribune that is so fair unfair to the other states that want this project, is basically what the propaganda they put out. And I know Summit Carbon watches these meetings, why wouldn't they? They just embarrass the show of. I want them to know that, in my opinion, you're colluding with the state, between the state people and you are the only ones that wanted this project, because I have not had anybody in Burley County come up and say, we want this project. So, like I say, in my opinion, if they want to lie, you still got to watch them, that snake has grown another head. I want you to be aware of that. And they put out that, that, that garbage, and now they're kind of, I think the thought is, well, we're running to Nebraska and out, and Morton County and through, well, they haven't given up. There's too much money involved, but keep an eye on what they say. And, one other thing, don't forget, I want to have another thing after this.
Okay. But... I think I know where you're headed with that.
You have till the end of the month for that $500 tax rebate on your home. So, I keep saying, if the elderly can't do it, young fellows, young ladies, go over and help your, your parents, or your grandma, grandpa, and get that stuff done, because it's 500 bucks, better you get it in Summit. Now, my last thing, might take a little time here. When I get a call from somebody that doesn't get the proper tax information, so they can fill out their taxes, and it seems to be concerning the poll workers, I went through this stuff with Auditor Smitskowski, always complains he can't say anything. Could you come up here and tell us what happened?
Yes, sir, what are your questions?
Pardon me? What was your process? Did you mail out 1099s?
No.
You didn't?
No.
Did you mail out W2s?
Yes.
When?
Uh, here about a week or two, about a week ago.
So, you were late with them?
Yes.
Well, my main concern on that, and I've got a lot of emails here, and I'm sure there are more, it's no use going through them. I want to forewarn you and the other departments, we're probably going to get audited by the IRS, and there better not be any shredding or deleting going on. Wouldn't surprise me if the state doesn't come in and probably news people. Documents are not to be discarded concerning this, because there's a lot of stuff wrong with the way these people were treated.
I agree.
And that was, and that's your responsibility.
Yep, and I would love for them to be able to see the emails that went back and forth.
Well, what am I supposed to tell them? I have no control over you. I can't go in there and tell you. You could have asked me, and I told you.
Yep, and I can...
1099, uh, 1099s are for contractors only.
Yep, and we were not directed...
And W2s go out like you get.
We, we were directed alternatively from our HR department.
So, why did it take that long?
What?
No, you weren't.
Nobody weren't?
No, you weren't.
Well, I can send you the emails.
Don't send me any.
Well, wait a minute here.
Look, I don't, I don't think we're going to bother with emails, because there's, there was like five or six meetings about it that we have the record already, and we know that there's in excess of 40 emails about that. So, an early on thing, I think there was some kind of manipulating going on there, Mark. Go ahead, Commissioner Woodcox.
Just as a, a information for the people in the audience who are listening, we had an election last fall, and this happens all the time. We have election workers, we hire them, we train them, they come to work the election, and it's all done. They get paid, and they get, it depends, the dispute is how do they get paid? Well, they get a 1099, which is if you weren't more, and kind of complicated, if you weren't more than $600, were required by the IRS to send them a 1099. In other words, saying that you earned this much, they report that on their income, and that, that's the way it goes. Or, they could be a W2, which is regular employee. Well, we had, what happened with our office here? Nothing. They didn't get anything. So, we had, I think it was 42 employees or 52 employees that didn't get anything. Now, they've already filed their tax return, and now here, here we come now, the last week, we sent out some, some W2s, and here these people all have to file an amended return and pay additional taxes because they didn't declare this income. Well, that's happened not only this time, but last year, the same thing, just because of, what do you think? Inaction of the auditor's office.
Inaction is definitely not the word for it. In fact, we went out and got consultation from a tax attorney to make sure that it was correct. I reached out to the HR director.
When was that done?
That was done this, this spring. Because there was an issue found... That was done this, this spring, because there was an issue found, and it was, it was, they were, there was concerns brought forward that shouldn't be 1099s. Now, that being said, we had all the election.
Mark, you know, Mark.
So you don't want me to talk? Okay, go ahead.
No, I do want you to talk, but you said this spring, but I think it was in February here after the deadline had already passed for submitting W-2s. By the time you took the advice of staff, staff, both the HR director and the finance director recommended that, from what I understand, that you contact a, a tax attorney for an opinion. So that was after the deadline had already passed. And I further understand that you had meetings with multiple people in attendance, and I believe some of those meetings were even recorded, where you were notified about this whole issue like last year, in probably kind of beginning of the year, right?
Produced the emails, because what we ended up doing is we got W-9 from every single election worker, and there was, there was concern, and there was questions brought forward on, on how to properly handle the election workers. And one thing I do specifically remember coming out of those meetings was HR informing us, do not have them go over a certain dollar limit, I believe it was $2,000, otherwise we have to add them on to payroll. And so we had several meetings to manage our election workers, to make sure they did not go over that deadline, that, 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 that amount, which they didn't. Nobody did. And I know that we had every single election worker fill out a W-9, which would indicate that they would receive a 1099. This issue was brought forward to me or concerned.
Sorry, start, start over again. When did you say every, all election workers got a 1099?
A W-9 form.
They filled out?
Yes.
A W-9?
Yes, which would indicate that they would receive a 1099.
And so they didn't.
And so.
And did they get a 1099?
They did not, because it was found that was, that would be the incorrect way of filing it. So I reached, I reached out to HR and said, hey, which one should we give them? She said a 1099. And so we had a meeting, we, we had a discussion between HR, myself, and finance, and the finance director recommended that we get a tax attorney. And so we, I did. I reached out, tried to find a tax attorney as, as quickly as I could.
When did they fill out those W-9s?
We ended up finding them, and we got correct direction from him, saying that we need to send out W-2s. That being said, I reached out to the state's attorney. That's correct.
This is all after you missed the, missed the boat, I think HR director was.
And whose responsibility was all that, to do all that? Not mine.
We reached out to HR.
Not the commission.
We reached out to HR and tried to implement it as we saw, as we understood from them.
Okay.
And again, I'd like to see the emails. I'd like to see the video recordings of the meetings, because, you know, we want to get to the truth here.
Don't want to go down that road.
Chairman Bittner, Bittner and Commissioners, it's not quite working here. I would like to tell you how that happened. We did have a meeting back in April of last year that said, if your election workers are getting close to $600, because that is the limit for the 1099, you need to let us know. We need personal action forms, because we have to do I-9s, we have to put them on as employees, and we have to do payroll. We have to do timekeeping. That was not done. So in February, I get emails from our auditor saying, you need to put, you need to get these employees W-2s. They're not my employees. Payroll is done. Payroll is done on, on our last payroll. Once W-2s go out for employees before January 31st, it's done. We can't undo anything. It's not like a general ledger system that you can adjust. Payroll does not adjust. So we have no payroll records for these 32 individuals, because I was never informed or given the right paperwork to put them on. So what Auditor Smenskowski asked me to do is, in my opinion, commit fraud, because I do not have payroll records for these people. But yet I was supposed to issue them a W-2. Our system automatically issues W-2s and does the uploads to the IRS. It's in HTML files, it's not copies of the W-2s. Uploads happen through HTML. We do all of our stuff the legal way, through payroll, everything was done. This came along later. I can't help it that he didn't follow my directions. I have the emails, I have an audio recording where he admits that, yeah, you told me.
Obviously, we'll, we'll ask you to get that to myself and to the state's attorney. Thank you, Ben.
You know, the thing, and Mark can address this. The thing that worries me is there's two things in particular. Number one, how those people were treated by not getting the returns they want to file, and that could trigger off an IRS, like I said, audit. There's probably gonna be all kinds of stuff now. It's one of them things. Everybody says, bring it up, bring it up. Well, okay, here it is. How do you replace election workers? These people that this happened to, they're not gonna be there next year. Half of them will quit and say, we're done with it. And it's extremely hard to get people to work the elections. And from, from my perspective, why is it so important to make sure they don't go over the $600 limit? If they go over 100 bucks, you pay them 100 bucks. And they're gonna appreciate it, because this is part-time, and most people are, are retired and stuff that are doing this. There is absolutely no excuse for this, and like I say, we'll see where it all, where it all goes. I'm done, Mark. You can go.
I, I don't know if you guys all got, got the contact, but I even got a contact from a former Secretary of State for the state of North Dakota, wanting to know where his paperwork was so he could file his taxes. That, that really got my attention.
I got one from a former county commissioner, said the same thing. I'd like to file my taxes.
I've actually gotten quite a few, yeah. Okay. I guess we've, we've pretty well covered that for today. Commissioner Bakken?
One more reminder for the public hearings for redesignating the elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to an appointed office, and this does come back to just input of the residents and taxpayers of Burley County. Our next meeting is March 22nd. That's this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Wilton Memorial Hall, 105 Dakota Avenue in Wilton, March 22nd. Also this Saturday at 2:00 p.m. at the Sterling School, 118 McKenzie Street in Sterling. March 29th at 10:30 a.m., 221 North Fifth Street, Bismarck Burley Public Library. And April 7th, the final public hearing will be at our regularly scheduled Burley County Commission meeting in the Tom Baker Room right here on April 7th at 5:00 p.m. Once again, public input is available. There's a form available on the website at burley.gov. So please, we do want to hear from our residents of Burley County.
Thank you, Commissioner Bakken. Appreciate that update. Anything else for the good of Burley County? We're adjourned.